Good evening and welcome. We're going to call to order the regular board meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for October 8, 2018. Welcome. Mr. Alexander.
President.
Mrs. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
Mrs. Latcher.
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
President.
All right. I have the very distinct pleasure tonight to introduce two students who are going to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to give you a little bit of information about Leah Stanovich and Zach Shumway. Leah and Zach are two of Akron Public Schools' best and brightest students, and in a minute you're going to find out why. Both students recently traveled to Killarney, Ireland this past summer to represent the United States of America at the Globe Program's annual meeting and global learning expedition. While in Ireland, Leah and Zach presented their research, conducted field research, were the guests of honor with the parade through downtown Killarney, distributed pens, candy, and goodwill at a cultural exchange evening, collaborated with students from Detroit, Michigan as the closing event of cultural diversity, and even kissed the Blarney Stone. Leah is last year's valedictorian from Kenmore Garfield High School. Her research was the effects of phosphorus and dissolved oxygen on freshwater ecosystems. In addition to using Globe Program research protocols, Leah also worked in a laboratory isolating aerobic and anaerobic bacteria, attempting to reason the various water qualities on the remnants of our historical canal system. In addition to presenting her research in Ireland, Leah also received a superior rating at State Science Day at the Ohio State University. Leah is presently a freshman at the University of Akron pursuing a science-related degree. Zach did his initial research while an eighth grader at Roswell County Middle School. Presently, he is a sophomore at Firestone High School's International Baccalaureate Program. Zach worked and continues to work directly with Dr. Brian Campbell, lead scientist of NASA's Soil Moisture Active Passon, or SMAP satellite. Zach measured soil moisture in order to ground-truth this NASA's new endeavor. Zach's work resulted in adjustments to the satellite, ensuring accurate global data collection for many years to come.
Wow.
As a result of their presentations in Ireland, Leah and Zach were personally invited to present their research at the fall meeting of the American Geophysical Union this December. This meeting happens to fall, unfortunately, on Leah's exam week at the University of Akron, and she will not be able to attend. Zach is one of only 116 high school students from around the globe selected and scheduled to attend. He just received his confirmation this month. And will be presenting before an assembled audience of about 26,000 scientists from around the world.
Wow.
So if you could help me welcome Leah and Zach to leave this. If you guys can come on up.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask you, you guys do stay up here with me. Tonight, you may have seen, we're going to face that relation once, but they can see we're in shiny faces. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of camera snapping. You might have seen earlier that they were joined tonight, and we were doing a lot of pictures up front. We had a dignitary in attendance just before the meeting, but unfortunately, he had to head up to Cleveland for another event, and that was Dr. Vernon Sykes, state senator for this area. And he was here to present some honoraries to Leah and Zach. And he did ask our former colleague and current Akron City Councilwoman-at-Large, Ms. Veronica Sims, to do that on his behalf, as he had to leave. But he was so gracious to come down and get some pictures, and I talked to Leah and Zach first, so.
So just quickly, everything he said, I was going to say, so I can't believe he really stole my speech. Actually, it was just maybe a few hours ago, I got the notice from the senator. He was really trying to double-schedule and get here. And when I heard what he was asking me to do, to come here and present to you all, I jumped at the idea. Although, we were all from council today, I did thought it was just so significant to be here today. I've always loved Mr., I was going to say Dr. Stephen France, just speaking prophetically. You can stand up. Just wanted also applaud Mr. France, and I know he's done a lot of work at the Globe Program. I know it's something that I was initially supposed to when I was here on the school board, but I am so very, very proud. You know, I get very nervous speaking in front of this little crowd, to know that you guys were in Ireland, speaking before hundreds of people, and you, Zach, are going to be in DC, speaking before 26,000 people. That is just awesome. And I want you to know that I'm APS proud of you, and in the foundational work of the professionals here at Akron Public Schools. So congratulations, and on behalf of Senator Vernon Sykes, I wanted to present these outstanding achievement awards to both Zach Shumway and to Leah Stanovich.
So I'd like to give you both just an opportunity to let us know who's here supporting you tonight, whether that's family, or friends, or faculty, and maybe tell us a little bit about your experience. What did it mean to you, and what was it like to be over there?
Okay, so tonight I have my mother with me, she's right over there, and then Mr. France. And while we were over in Ireland, like, the main purpose was for the science conference we attended for the Globe Program, which that was most, that's where we spent most of our time. But besides that, it was definitely an incredible experience. We did lots of touring around the area, and just around Ireland, and just experiencing what it was like to be in a different country, in a whole different part of the world.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. What about you? What was your favorite experience?
Well, my favorite experience, I loved all of it. But I really loved being with all 400 of us, of us from around the world. I loved us marching through Killarney like it was a normal thing. They had this giant globe that the kids from Ireland that were involved in the program, they pushed down the streets of Killarney. And the parade, we all had our flags for our countries, and we were in our regions. And just seeing the townspeople come out and watch us, and just observing where we were all from, because we're all, we're all different shapes, sizes, and colors. I just thought it was really, it was really amazing that we could come together like that. Because the science, it doesn't matter what you look like, it's what you're there for, what you put out. So it was really just an amazing experience. I have my mom, dad back there, and my boyfriend.
Mr. France, of course. Well, on behalf of the board, thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you for representing us so well, not only here at home, but now internationally. You're definitely ambassadors. We couldn't be more proud of the work that you do, and we look forward to watching you grow and seeing how you change the world. Thank you. I'm going to take the picture for Mr. Francis.
One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Very good.
To parents of Mr. France, thank you for sharing them with us and trusting us with them, and we're very proud of them.
Leah, I think they should give you special permission to take the exam later.
You guys got it in with the university.
Maybe I'll make a couple of phone calls.
All right. Well, if we are, we are going to continue, we do have another recommendation. Cheryl Ryan from the Ohio School Boards Association is here to present a recognition, and I'd like to turn it over to you, Cheryl. Thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Ryan, and I'm the Director of Board Management Services of the Ohio School Boards Association. And I'm joined tonight here by Reno Campapelli, who is the Regional Manager for the Northeast Region of the Association. For those of you that aren't familiar with OSBA, we represent the state's 3,500 publicly-elected school board members and the diverse districts that they all serve. Leading our organization is a broad group, a diverse group of individuals, our Board of Trustees. And one of our very important Board of Trustees is on your local Board of Education, and that is Lisa Mansfield. You all know, as board members, the amount of work that you put in, and at board meetings, attending district events, committee meetings, and the additional responsibility of being a Board of Trustee member adds another layer that a lot of people are loath to accept, but we are grateful for the service. So tonight, I have a plaque for Lisa, recognizing her service on the Board of Trustees. So Lisa, if you'd like to. And this just says, "The Ohio School Boards Association recognizes the Akron City Board of Education for its support and encouragement to Lisa Mansfield as a member of the OSBA Board of Trustees." And this one is for you to present to your district. And then we have one for you as well. And this is for Lisa herself. It says, "Is hereby recognized by the Ohio School Boards Association for outstanding service as a member of the OSBA Board of Trustees 2018." And I've got a couple of copies of press for Lisa. Thank you so much. And now I'd like to turn it over to Reno.
All right. And I feel like I'm an all-star of board members. I can't thank you guys enough for being involved in Northeast Region, because all of you, at one time, were all involved, active in Washington, DC, and that. Well, Northeast Region is 19 counties and 225 schools. And we have the, every year, there's only five board members they pick for the All-Ohio School Board, which is a heck of an honor. It's very hard to get to that level. You have one of your own. I am honored to present Reverend Curtis Walker as our All-Ohio School Board nominee. And I agree his bio, but you guys all know. But our fall conference, Rick Lewis wrote like a two-page bio, "What is this outstanding? All you've done." We had to come short. Thank you so much. And also at the fall conference, Akron had two programs in the Student Achievement Fair, so congratulations on that. And then we'll go around that day, and we'll thank the kids and honor those programs. So thank you again.
Thank you for having us. You're doing outstanding work, and we really appreciate it. So congratulations.
Thank you. Do you have a conference? Come with me.
Well, what a way to start a board meeting. Thank you, Lisa, for your service, and Reverend, for your service as well. Congratulations to both of you. And with that, would one of you like?
Oh, APS school board.
With that, would either of you like to have the honor of going first for community and school reflection?
We were, many of us were at the CUBE conference in Las Vegas, which was a lovely experience. I think we brought the hot weather back with us, because it hasn't cooled off since. I know that there are several things we've already pushed forward to the district that we'd like to see possibly brought here. There was an excellent presentation on implicit bias. That was probably one of my favorite aspects of the conference. I've taken workshop after workshop of, on bias, or the like. And this was one of the ones that I really felt was a lightbulb moment. So I know that several of us have reached out to possibly bring this gentleman in. He actually, do you have his name, Bruce?
Dr. Bryant Marks.
Dr. Bryant Marks. And he, he's actually the trainer for, he's trained the police department for Los Angeles. That was one of the things that was most impressive. I think he said they had 26,000 officers. So I think a little laugher, and we could handle a little bit of training from him. So that was one of the most interesting. And then several of us went to one by a school board in Missouri that has 100% graduation rate. And they kind of knocked our socks off. But I can tell you that walking into CUBE this time around, and I got a little weepy when I talked to Mr. Alexander about it at the, at the meeting. First of all, he represents us so very well at the national level. And all you have to say is you're from Akron, Ohio, and first thing they say is, "Oh, you know Bruce Alexander."
Absolutely.
And you have an excellent equity policy. I mean, those are some of the first things they say. One of the next things they all had questions about this year was "I promise." Everybody wanted to talk about "I promise." Isn't it a charter school? Can you explain why it's not a charter school? And so that was really interesting. But they're also interested in our college and career academies. There was quite a bit of chatter as soon as they heard you were from Akron. So, you know, I know that the ultimate goal is to be the greatest urban district in the country, and I think that we're making that headway. People are talking.
Absolutely.
That's a long day.
I'm sorry I couldn't make CUBE this year, but I did get a chance to go to the Love Akron Breakfast. And Judge Carlomore was outstanding in her speech. And for this month, where we recognize Domestic Abuse Awareness Month, and Breast Cancer Month, that affects many, many women, she talked about. And the theme for that breakfast was about women, particularly the woman in your life, and emphasizing the impact, the influence, the support, the love, the underpinning that that woman has in your life, or the woman has in your life today. So I think that was an outstanding, you know, breakfast, and particularly, an outstanding theme for this year, particularly because of all the things that have happened, and are happening in our world today, to highlight what women have done. And she did an excellent job. And of course, the honorees, the clergy persons, and then Carla.
Davis.
Davis. Thank you. Who's one of the honorees, and those outstanding persons who contribute to the life of the city of Akron.
And her beautiful voice.
Outstanding. Outstanding.
We'll go next. Yeah, I'm going to talk about CUBE. Once again, another excellent conference. I attended 10 different sessions over the course of three days, and I picked out three highlights. All the sessions were good, but these three stood out. The first one I went to was leveling the playing field through social-emotional learning. Very interesting, and there was a little bit different bent on equity and social-emotional learning this year that came out. And I think you'll, you'll understand why I picked these three when I start talking about it. But this session sort of hit me, and I shared this, I put it out on social media immediately when this little quote came out, a little slide they put up. But I thought it was very interesting. They said, "If a child can't read, we teach them to read. If a child can't do math, we teach them to do math. If a child can't behave, we punish them." I think that's really, you know, really sort of sets the tone for the rest of three days. That was the very first session I went to. I thought it was very telling. Now, in the same breath, they also started talking about what they do to help teachers who also may have some issues with, you know, social and emotional issues. I don't know if this was a session I went to, but one session we went to, they actually gave us a form to fill out, and they said, you know, 19% of the US population has difficulty with anxiety. They said, "Plug in how many students you have. You have an idea how many students you have that have anxiety problems. Plug in the number of employees you have, and you'll see how, you have an idea how many people have anxiety problems." They went through a couple of different mental health issues and percentages, and it sort of, you know, light's a light bulb. So, you know, they started talking a little more this year about how the classroom, what goes in the classroom affects the teachers in the classroom as well. Lisa, I was in the same one from Missouri. One interesting point about that one, this is a school district that sits right next to Ferguson. And they started about doing, they started talking about having, building relationships with the community and the police department, the school system. And one person they brought in, I guess, what was his name? Michael. He got shot by the Ferguson Police Department.
His mom.
Yeah. And it was his mom, that's an integral part of the group in the neighboring town. I can't remember the name of the city right now, but it was the same one, had the 100% gen, 100% graduation rate. That was, that was very interesting. But part of what they talked about as well was how they have such great staff buying in on everything they do. And they actually asked a question, "What are you doing?" And they said, "They do things that, they have comfort rooms for their staff. If a staff's having some problems, they have a way to get away, and just, you know, reboot themselves during the day if they're having their own kind of problems." They talked about how they recognize their teachers, and reward their teachers for what they're doing in the classroom as well, it's more of a recognition. I think we even talked about one time, we did something like that when I first got on the board. I remember getting emails about going to schools and celebrating as a teacher came in. I can't remember what it was, but I don't think we do it anymore. But, you know, once again, that theme, what are we doing for our staff, as well of, as well of our, as well as our students? And the last one I want to talk about, very similar, you can't separate your head from your body. One statistic that came out of that is half of all mental health disorders begin by age 14. So obviously, you know, we're dealing with half the population that is adults are going to have issues before they even, you know, while they're going through puberty, I guess. That's hard enough on a kid. But it was, it was interesting. And they started talking about, once again, mental health, and one thing they were doing in their district was looking at attendance, not only of students, but of teachers. And was that, are the teachers taking mental health days themselves? And what are they doing to, you know, try to reach out to the teachers who might have attendance problems, and start using that as some kind of an indication of, maybe we reach out, start helping the teachers, in the same way we keep talking about reaching out and helping our students? So, once again, an awesome, awesome CUBE conference. Mark Bryant, or Bryant Marks, I went backwards. Bryant Marks, he was, that's the first time I was entertained by a discussion on implicit bias. He was, it was great. He had an hour and a half to do it, and everybody stayed past an hour and a half, and everybody was late for the next session, listening to him, because he kept, he just, "Don't go yet, I'm not done, but don't go yet, I'm not done." And then we were all late to the next session. But it was very, very, very entertaining and educational at the same time. So, and I think that's nice that I had. Oh, now, I gotta talk about this as well. I went to On the Table this past week, and I got to have a discussion on education. And it was interesting, when it just, people asked me if I was leading discussions. No, I want to sit back and listen. And I did, but I couldn't help interjecting at some point in time, because one thing I heard from a person of notoriety in Akron, and when I say notoriety, it's not a bad thing, but we started talking about schools, and all of a sudden, the grading came up on the different schools. And the statement came out that, you know, well, compared to Copley, Akron's not a good school system. And I think I gave people a lightbulb moment, because I've used this statement analogy before, but put it to them, you know, we took a cohort of kids out of one of our elementary schools and swapped it with Arrowhead, and brought those Arrowhead kids into Akron, what do you think the grades on those schools would be 12 months from now? And all of a sudden, the discussion started, went to poverty, and what those kids might be. So it was sort of a neat little lightbulb moment for some people that were at my table.
I'm just going to add a couple of things. I remember we had the conference, it was great. But one thing, Tim and I were in the same session, that learning and playing, leveling the playing field, social-emotional learning, was it talked about, and it really caught my attention when they had the, we had these crowns on, they put these crowns with these little emotions and so forth. So every time you turned around, you look, every kid has, every one of us had some type of emotional need, and you had to talk about this. And it was really interesting, but they took it from there, and also said, "Now, let's look at your teachers, who have these emotional needs, who have these problems, issues, and they are teaching our kids. What do we do with the teachers?" So I thought that was really, really big there. And Dr. Marks, I mean, I'm pushing for us to bring him here. I mean, it will be an eye-opener, not just for our school district, but I think that will lead us in the city and in the county, doing something like that, and bringing up individuals like this. Because he was just supposed to be the keynote speaker, but he engaged us throughout the entire time that he was talking. But he was also showing us our own implicit biases and stats by having us go on the website, answer a question, and they scored the questions. And then you saw all the biases that were in the, in the conference area during that time. So it was really, really interesting. I did look him up as well, and he does have a video on YouTube, he talks about some of that, and he goes a little deeper into it, which was really good. But the last thing I want to say was, all the sessions that they had at CUBE this year, they all evolved around equity, student achievement, and teacher emotional health. And so that's, that's big. I mean, it's probably to me too, and thanks to Reverend Walker for introducing me to CUBE several years ago when I first got on the board, that it talked about the whole piece, not just the kid, not just the student, not just the issues and so forth, but it talked about, brought it all together. So it was very, very good. I mean, I have a lot of studying to do, you know, because there's more that I want to want to know and learn, and reference to what they're talking about. But we are doing, I am proud of Akron Public Schools, because we are doing a lot of good things. We're on the cutting edge. We have the opportunity to either go soar, or just stagnate. I don't want us to be stagnant, let's soar. We have that very opportunity for Akron Public Schools, not just, you know, statewide, but nationwide. And so I would love to see us push, because we're doing a lot of good things that can take us and our kids way above what's going on nationally. So please, let's just continue to work for our students and push forward.
I got a sidebar. The guy, he reminds you of Pastor Norris. And I mean, he talks so fast, but it, I mean, you could understand it, and it was so good. He kind of kept you like in this position, like, you know, in ready position. But, I mean, he talked, if you ever heard Pastor Norris talk about something he's passionate about, but we could understand it, we could take it in, we could process it, and we wanted more, more, more. So everything that they said was so true about this guy, but he was not nearly finished with what he needed or wanted to say to us. There was so much more. We knew it, and we really would have sat there as long as he was willing to talk to us, or they would let him. He kept asking for more time, but they were like, "No, this is it." They did a couple, they gave him time a couple times, and then they said, "No, no more, you're out." But he is a fascinating speaker, and he was really talking about the different things. And we were exposed with our biases, how you think about things, and you think they're this way, and they're really not that way. And he was able to explain to people that because you may act in a certain way, doesn't mean that you're prejudiced, doesn't mean that you're racist, you know? And people perceive it in a way, and then you may even take it in and say, "I think I'm racist," or "I think I'm, you know, prejudiced," but that's not the case. So he really brought out a lot of things that will be helpful to everybody in this room, because we didn't get enough, you know, of what he was communicating. So it would really be good if you guys could get together, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and President, and bring him here for everyone. And like Bruce said, we can incorporate, you know, other leaders and their people in the community as well in the process, and a lot of people can get the help that they need to just be introspective and find out more about themselves.
I'll add just a little bit more. It really was amazing. My husband called me like day two of the conference. He was like, "What are you doing on Amazon?" I said, "Buying books." I remember a couple of sessions where someone would say, "Have you read this book?" And most of the hands would go up. I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, I need that book now." But a couple of quick things to add, the Jennings, Missouri, that came up a couple of times. I mean, truly fantastic, amazing stuff happening there. They have a program with Ancestry.com, where some of their students actually get to go through the ancestry.com stuff, and then visit the lands of their ancestors in really cool ways together. Every single student had an opportunity for a paid internship. They offered police academy training programs. They had like hundreds of cops rotating into their gyms and their workout facilities. Just amazing stuff. But afterwards, I got to talk to the superintendent a little bit, and I told him I was from Akron. He's like, "Really? You're from Akron? You guys are doing such cool stuff." I was like, "No, you're the one doing cool stuff." It was really a neat moment to have someone who was literally winning an award for being an awesome district, also tell us how appreciative he was of the amazing things you're helping in Akron. And also just to add, I went to a session about equity policy, and how to actually create policies, and several times, "Oh, you know Bruce." But one thing that I But one thing that kept coming up was someone would say, oh, we have an equity diversity committee. And the presenter would say, cool, that's great, but do you use it as a lens for everything? Not just on your committee, are you using it as a lens for your finance and your instruction and your policy? And it was just a really nice reminder that it's like, we could have a line item on our budget, or our budget could be a statement of equity, which is it. And I think those kinds of pushing reminders throughout the conference really felt very grounded and rooted for us to hear right now. And a couple of quotes that I just loved, we started one session, someone says, okay, all perspectives are valid, they're all valid, but they are all partial. And everyone's like, okay, I can agree to that before I start my segment, which I loved. And the last thing that I will end on is the amazing speaker that we've all been talking about. One of his final challenges to us is a call to action of like, are you a thermostat? Or are you a thermometer? Are you measuring the temperature of the room and reporting out, or are you the one changing it? And it was such an empowering way to end. We were all like, we're not thermometers. We're thermists, we're thinking, oh, it's awesome.
It was. Kelly, it was the best.
Well done. Well, thank you very much for bringing all of that back. I'm excited to see where maybe in the last conference, we've had a couple of good things come out of that. One of them, we'll get an update on later, so maybe something exciting will come out of this one too. We have no request to address the board, but we are getting an update, a presentation tonight, Ms. Carla Sibley and Mr. Dan Rambler on the APS Customer Engagement Center. So Florida's yours.
Okay, let's get our projector going here. Well, I'm on here. Am I on here?
Yeah, just standing.
Okay, here it comes. Well, thank you for the time to share some of our ideas around the APS Customer Engagement Center concept. I'm happy to be tag teaming with my colleague, Dan Rambler. Matt? Yeah. So you were given this picture as a, I guess, an example of what an engagement center could look like, and you've seen these in retail centers. Hospitals now have them. If you've had any visit at all to the Children's Hospital Medical Center, you'll see that they have launched their engagement center. I had an opportunity to tour that last week. It was pretty amazing. Airports and other places now have a way for frontline staff to assist their customers in navigating and accessing their services. So this is the idea that we are considering with the work on this Engagement Center concept for the Akron Public Schools. And I wanted to just share where we are in terms of what we should be thinking about in developing this idea, building with the end in mind, considering what it is we want. Are we looking to create loyal customers? Do we want to increase satisfaction? And then defining the ideal customer experience, how we really want for people to feel after they've had an opportunity to engage with us. And we are right on target with our technology, as you all know, but wanting to use that as a way to get instant feedback from our customers as well as backend solutions so that when folks do enter into our office areas, we're able to, in one-button, two-click technology, get them what they need. And then what I think is most important related to diversity, equity, and inclusion is meeting customers where they are. And really understanding where they are in terms of how processes work, their level of ability, even their age, just all dimensions of diversity so that we are communicating in ways that resonate with the people that we serve, and then putting the right people in place. I asked our support staff from all the departments around the room, when you engage with our customers, what are they asking for? What kinds of conversations are you having with them? And this is what they said. And so what you see in the red are topics that are shared across departments in this district, and parent concerns, which was really interesting to me. Every department around this room handles parent concerns from the superintendent all the way through our system, as well as all the other reds, which I thought was pretty interesting. So people visit and converse with us in many different ways. Look at all the things people come into our main office location to access. And so this was important for me because in order to build a responsive engagement center, you have to have some idea of what people are wanting when they walk through our doors so that our people are properly trained and we're ready on our side of the coin to serve them the best that we can. And so this is just one way to look at this customer experience cycle. And I know the superintendent is thinking Disney, this is not Disney, although I would love to go to Disney, not in Columbus, but Miami for their training institute. But this whole idea of discovery, gathering information, understanding what they like when they walk through the door, what are the issues, what do they need, ensuring that they have good access, they understand what is being offered to them, and they make good, informed choices based on what they wish to do, and that we engage our employees so that the right people are speaking with the right folks to meet their need. Now, you can imagine how much more efficient we're going to be at this when we're all in one place. And so that's what's really exciting about this. And then continuous improvement, being sure we're getting the feedback, maybe using a kiosk with four simple questions that Dan Rambler, not Dan Rambler, Andrew Zicardi, you don't even look like, Andrew Zicardi developed. Four questions tied back to the 16 common expectations that anyone can answer at any time that they've engaged with us as part of this Customer Engagement Center. And so Dan's department is really going to take the lead in staffing and coordinating these efforts because so many of the connections happen at that student services level. And so I'll turn it over to Dan now to share logistics and more stuff.
Thank you.
We'll answer questions.
The really nice thing, and I think it's important that Carla and I are doing this together, it shows that it's not like one of us, it's really all of us, and it's all of us and senior staff. It's the things that you've talked about, I continually use the example of the superintendent. When we went to Boston a few years ago, they have an Engagement Center, and it is a really good example. Columbus now has one. Baltimore has a really good example of that too. So it's something that other districts are utilizing. This isn't just some new idea as well. So one of the things I think is really important is to have a goal. What is our goal for this idea? It's to get, it's to get people answers in a timely way. You know, one of the things that, one of the things my department always strives for is to get answers in the moment, in real time. You all know, if parents contact you and you don't get back to them for a couple of days, their anxiety has risen over the 48 or 72 hours. So the nice thing is, is all these different pieces are kind of merging together, so we're all going to be in one building. We'll have more answers within our grasp. So that way, when somebody comes in, if they need to have help with a student that has an IDP, it's going to be awesome because Special Ed's going to be right there, and we can go to Special Ed and get the experts to come be part of this conversation. So the goal is that we're getting resolutions, we're resolving the issue that's arisen, so we don't just keep prolonging the answer to that question. Another really good point is that we'll be able to have stronger data, which one of the challenges always in any larger district is making sure that your data is really efficient and really accurate. So this will enable us to have stronger access to our data, which will enable the Treasurer's Office to make stronger decisions with that data, and we'll be able to continue to respond more in real time to that data. And then the final thing, which I know a number of you talked about for a number of years, is having an electronic enrollment process, which Howard Lawson isn't here, but that is something that we've already started moving along. So there's a lot of, as I said, but there's a lot of various points that are all coming together in the Engagement Center. It's a great opportunity as we get to 10 North Main of all these things coming together over a period of time. We don't just want to throw them all in together, but we want to do them all correctly in over a period of time as we start to put that all together. One of the other things is making sure that we find resources. So here's just some key points to think about. So there's so many resources in Akron, there's so many good opportunities, not only in our district, but also in the city. So it's making sure that we have staff that knows those pieces of information, and we're not just telling people to call somebody. That's one of the things we've learned, is that really connecting people to resources is connecting them to resources, not just giving them a phone number. So that's going to be something that the Engagement Center and then the specialists within there are going to be strong at doing. Helping complete the enrollment process, which ties back to that electronic enrollment. Resolving complaints or concerns. A lot of times, the complaints or concerns are things that if we just address them in that moment, we can find resolution, we can find an answer to it, and then we can move forward together. Connecting visitors to appropriate services that maybe Akron Public School has, but also the area, the city that has, and then also the supports. And there's a lot of various supports that we can connect people to. I'm going to list a few of them as well, I believe. The drafting Engagement Specialist Job Description is important because you're going to see that come along as well because that position's a unique position. There's a lot of things we've listed that we want this Engagement Center to do. We also want it to be not just traditional hours. Maybe the Engagement Center is open long, maybe they open earlier, maybe they're open on Saturdays. We want to be able to have the ability, as Carla said, is to reach people when they need to be reached. And so those are a lot of different opportunities that we can have as we have Engagement Specialists that maybe we flex their schedules, and then also that we could utilize those people to go out to various community events, which we do now, but just enhancing that some more. Some various professional development areas, because if you think about, there's, these positions have to know a lot of stuff. Customer service, of course, as Carla's talked about, but also cultural competence, I mean, the people that we are serving and what their needs are. Understanding our community and families, it's one of the things, if you're in Akron, you work with people in Akron, or in any other city, every city has the uniquenesses of their city. So it's really understanding our people and how can we help them, and what can we do to help them. And that's going to be a really important part. Restorative practices is going to be an important part too, because we're not in the business of throwing people away. How do we help them if somebody makes a mistake? How do we help them and how do we keep moving forward? All of the various APS processes between Special Ed, discipline, elementary, secondary, custody, there's so different, many of them, that they have to have a good amount of knowledge and so they can help answer questions and help get to resolutions. The city resources I mentioned, project rise because we do have a good amount of families that are homeless, roughly always about 10% is what we have identified in the district. The bus passes, now that we have high school bus passes, that process as well will be really important. This is just another photo of the Engagement Center, the waiting area. I know when we started first, first talking about this, which was three or four years ago, you, I always thought about it as when you go into Verizon, like there's a very standard process of how you are interacting with, and they put your name on a little iPad or something, and then you wait, and then they come up and they kind of walk around with you. It's that idea that the Engagement Specialist is with the person, the family, until there's a resolution in that moment, which is another good point of us not passing off people from one person to the next person, but being with the person. The same thing with the waiting area. If you ever are down in my hallway in the basement, you notice we have coloring pages everywhere. You know, it's like the coolest thing, and I've been saying this for six years, everybody loves color, kids and adults. And it's a very positive thing, and it's just a simple thing, but it's, whatever it might be, we give out tons of books down there because everybody grabs a book and they take it home. But it's making sure that we have those various things so that we can just continue to enhance what we already are trying to work on. Carla, did you have anything else you wanted to mention?
I don't. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer when I can.
I want to start just by saying, you know, thanks, and I'm really excited about moving forward even with the electronic enrollment process and just streamlining. And I assume you're probably doing this, I love the part about getting the feedback and maybe there's four questions and the 16 expectations and just that whole sort of... Because I think if you're going to sort of move the needle or you're going to improve customer service, I think it really has to come from a place of honesty, recognizing what you do well and maybe what you don't do so well, and being open to getting some criticism that you might not like, and then saying, all right, you know, but this is real, and we need to figure out how to, how to address that. So I love that you're getting some feedback, and hopefully, we're talking to some people first, maybe even people who have, who've been vocally critical of, you know, how we do things, or, you know, getting in touch with us, or getting in touch with the right person. Hopefully, we're talking to some of those first so that we're designing it really around them as well. I also love the data piece. Before you got to the data piece, before you got up, I was making notes to myself already about the data, because I think the people that are probably doing this really well are literally sort of, they're writing the book when it comes to data and collecting it and sort of making a science out of how to improve customer service. So I love that you're collecting the data too. So just some comments from me, and I think we should definitely be looking at putting some resources where this is concerned, because I think we're not, you know, we're not one of those districts that's one elementary, one middle, one high school where, you know, all of those sort of issues and challenges of reaching in and reaching out are easily solved. I think we're a beast, and we need to be able to, you know, we need to put some resources behind what you're talking about. I love what you guys presented, so.
If I could answer just one part, is one of the things that I love in my department is that people are very open to tell me their upsetnesses, sometimes with me, which is good, which is, which is really a really good thing. Like if we're all honest with ourselves, and I say this all the time, I make so many mistakes every day, but then I try to resolve the mistake. And if we're okay to talk to people about that, I think that furthers the relationship with the individuals. But it is a nice thing because all of us, and it's not just one department, but it's all of us. We all can see the areas where we can be better. And it's making sure that the Engagement Center is not just one individual, one person, one department doing it, but it's really all of us coming together to do it. It's a really good point.
Thank you. We have Ginger and Lisa.
I was just going to say, you know, I like the, like the total access to the services, you know? When they come in and they have a need, you guys can grab whoever you need, and you guys are all present, and you're able to resolve that issue. Another thing that I like is like the person just staying with the person when he comes in, because consistency, you know, it leads to trust, you know? So whenever a person knows that somebody is right there, it shows a concern whether they are or not, they would know. But they would build the trust with the APS, you know, clientele based on that process. So those are some good components that I heard. There were many, but those are two that stood out for me because, I don't know, it's probably something about me that says that.
One of the things that came up when we knew you were going to do this presentation... One of the things that came up when we knew you were going to do this presentation in instructional policy was the job that they do with InfoLine, which has just, which is 211 in Summit County, which has just recently been merged with United Way, who happens to be a partner of Akron Public Schools. They do an amazing job and have an incredible database. It might be a really good idea to somehow work within that, or merge that, or see what help they might be able to give us. I've learned an awful lot about them in the last year and a half since I've worked for the county, so.
Yeah, we use InfoLine a lot. We've even tossed around the idea of co-locating, InfoLine resource.
Oh, nice.
Maybe not every day, maybe on a periodic schedule to be available for families, but they are an excellent resource.
Great, thank you.
I have just a couple of comments. I'm glad that we're doing, this is good timing, I think, with all the things that are going on with Akron Public Schools, all the initiatives and things of that nature, I think this is good. The perception that people have at times of all the good things that we're doing, they don't hear it, don't see it, but they think that we're not doing enough. But I think this is going to let them, allow them to know, show them that we do care about them, we do care about the kids, we do care about the community. I think that's going to change the community by giving them the resources. Sometimes, and I found this out at Juvenile Court, you get, we get families all the time that are angry and upset, but when they come in and we have someone there to kind of either walk them through, or take them to the Family Resource Center, where they can get some of the resources they may need, some help that they need, they calm down, then they become your friend. And so I think that's, this is a way to turn the community around and say, hey, Akron Public Schools is doing a good job, they have helped me with this, they can help, if you need help, call them, because they can, if you have a kid in school. So I think this is going to be a very good concept. I like it, I wrote down here, I love this, because now we're providing service to the families who need, and I think that's going to do nothing but be a positive and a feather, feather in our hat as we move forward.
If I can just for a second, because hopefully, as we continue to evolve, we can continue to work with the judge at Juvenile Court, because I know the superintendent and I and some others that were at a conference, we had talked about maybe having the Family Resource Center have a presence in the Engagement Center, because that is a really good resource, but sometimes because it's in Juvenile Court, people are less than interested in utilizing it. So I know that that was something we had talked about, which I think would be phenomenal, because they do have wonderful resources and case management opportunities. And it's one of the things, and you, you all know it, and sometimes our families need help. And I can tell you, I have four kids, and sometimes I need some help, too. We all do. And it's part of being able to be the resource that we can offer help to each other for when we need it. And I think the Family Resource Center, that's something I think would be pretty phenomenal if we could even have them there some of the time, because that would be a phenomenal resource for families.
Pretty sure the judge would go, he would be on the call.
We have Tim and Reverend, and then Morgan, but I am going to ask something real quick. Have you thought about the same thing with other agencies, like Judd Family Services?
Yeah, we just happened to be at a conference with the judge, and it tied into other stuff we were talking about. But yes, that's something Carla's talked about, is looking at all the different possibilities that it could be. And then we'll just be limited by the space that Ryan lets us have.
Mr. Miller, Reverend Walker, and Miss Lasher.
Couple of questions. There will always be people that don't want the person-to-person contact, so is there discussion on the, you know, online or telephone call revolving around the customer service piece as well?
Yeah, and I think that's a really good question. You guys actually pushed us to do this a couple of years ago when we created the central registration email. So people email central registration, EPS learns, and there are three of us that get us, or get those, and then we can respond to them. And some people want to do that. I think that's something, as we evolve this, that we look at, it's part of the training that people need to have, that there is a way to handle phone conversations with people. Sometimes people are upset, but getting them to the place where you can understand it. But same thing with email, that it's that general concept of reaching people where they are and helping them get to where they want to be or where they need to be.
Just, I know we started, it's been a year ago, maybe a little over a year, we had some taglines at the bottom of emails with customer surveys. Did we incorporate any of that data?
Yes. Carla can tell you, and I'm not gloating about my department at all, but I have now over 100 responses to those, and I've had two negative feedbacks. It's one of the things that I think we need to continue to get those, though, because the other part is, is when somebody does have the negative experience, we want to follow up with them, because it's good that you tell us it wasn't good, but I want to fix it now, too.
I hope you're sharing the positive with us.
Yes.
Within your departments, if somebody has a problem.
That's all we. No, actually, it's, they do a phenomenal job.
98 of those came from his staff.
There are thousands of responses.
The district does.
Yeah, across the departments, and 98% of them are positive. Because there is just something about heaven there that reminds you to take that 10-second breathe.
That's great.
Just the last real quick comment, this really dovetails with a lot of the comments I'm hearing in our community discussion about, you know, people have some constructive criticism or just criticism about communication or perceived lack of communication. And once again, it's trying to meet them where they're at. I mean, in my business now, I just jokingly say, if I had a carrier pigeon, I would communicate with you that way, because you've got people, you know, different social medias, that's how we get in touch with them. It's just, there's so many different opportunities for communication, you have to, or be a jack of all trees.
Yeah. I think the other thing to keep in mind is just from the leadership of the board, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, senior staff, the treasurer, is, there's a different approach to trying to help people in this district, and you don't see that in every district. I think that's a concerted effort by everybody, is we're trying to help people and trying to get a resolution, which I think is really important and something that everybody should be proud of and keep encouraging us to keep doing, but also keep doing better, too.
If it's by phone, if it's in person, you add on the bottom to put the correct person in each of those spots. One of the major complaints or concerns, even when we walk into a building, how we're perceived, even as a board member. When I step into a building, the secretary is there, and I'm there for five minutes, they've got their back to me the whole time. And when they finally turn around and ask me, what do I want, it's not a pleasant, what do I want? And then when you say, well, I'm a board member, you know, then there's a certain response, but it doesn't matter if I'm a board member, parent, or assistant. We got to, in that resource area, people who are trained, sensitive, who smile. Again, I go into the banks, whatever their training process is now, they may not even lift their head, but they simply say, as soon as they hear that door open up, good morning! You know, they're saying something to disarm whatever attitude I have when I come in. They're saying, good morning. Something has to be in place for when our parents and others come into that resource or that Engagement Center, to disarm them for whatever stuff they're coming in there with, to say, I'm in a good place, you know, there's somebody who's going to listen to me, and I'm going to find an end to whatever that concern is. And that's getting people with a skill set, the ability to be able to handle those situations.
I agree, and I, you know, we have really strong expectations of what we want, but it's always going to be, when people don't meet the expectations, what do we do? And that, the secretary and I talked about that today, and it's being able, as all of us, is being able to have adult conversations with each other, and sometimes we need to tell people that you didn't do the best there, here's another way to do it. And sometimes the superintendent has to tell me that, too, because we all make mistakes at times, but how do we reach to meet that expectation every single time? And not because you're a board member, but because you're a person, it doesn't matter.
Just call Rhonda, who sits out front desk, she does a heck of a job. I know when she answers the phone or when you walk in, man, if you have a bad feeling, you're going to turn around, because it's the way she treats you, so outstanding.
Yeah, just one real quick question, and actually, Reverend, your comments were, so I know you guys are probably so tired of hearing about all the cube stuff, but in one session, they were talking about an Engagement Center model. It does not sound as robust as ours, actually, but one thing they did say that I really appreciated was that feedback loop, like they interacted with a lot of folks that didn't actually have email addresses. So they said, well, cool, maybe we should start supplying parents with email addresses through the school, and they were able to implement something. So I just thought that was a really powerful loop that you showed, that we're not just stopping here when it's done, it's feeding into itself more. But then as a quick question, do we have resources where we're able to communicate broadly, like what are the spaces, how you get there, or is that something that's kind of to be determined later?
Do you mean like, that we broadly share with parents?
Yes, with like community members, or are we, can we advertise it, do we have resources to do that?
I would say we do it, but we probably don't do it as efficiently and as well to meet everybody knowing it, you know. But I think that's true with any large organization, I think that's the thing that we need to keep improving on, is that we share information, but sometimes it's, I get phone calls from my parent, or from my kids' schools all the time, but sometimes, I'll be honest with you, I don't want to listen to while I'm eating dinner with my kids, so I don't listen to it. But sometimes, it's how do we reach people and give them the opportunity to get it numerous ways? And sometimes that's a unique challenge, because people have different means that they're getting information from, too.
What you're saying, and I spoke with a parent, I was sharing with Carla, and she was talking about, does Akron Public Schools have like a marketing campaign to tell all the good things that they're doing? You know, are you, you know, are you doing something like robust, like you said, to communicate this wonderful information? So she's right in the same, you know.
Yeah, that's a good one, and I would just say, Mark Williamson does a really good job at getting those stories, like getting news channels and newspapers to put those out there, too, because I think we do. But, you know, it's doing more of that, and sometimes of the simple, really good stories, too. It's not the story that maybe somebody's going to pick up on, but I think that's always something that we have to keep doing and pushing that, to get people to be able to see and hear.
Do we have like any videos, like on our website, of parents actually sharing some of the great experiences they've had at APS, or, like a loop of, you know, every so often you can entitle something, you know, and have a parent actually do a testimony, testimonial or something like that on a routine basis, that would just loop through the website? I don't know, it's just.
No, it's good, I mean, we kind of do, but having more of that is a good idea, too, of having more parent feedback in that respect, too.
I think we're going to be able to do so much more at 10 North Main, and with the technology upgrades and the infrastructure in place, where you could really have monitors on the wall that work and show stories and marketing information in a new and different way, so we're excited about it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. And I always love, as we're getting reset, the things that you guys said, and something Reverend Walker said, always makes me think that from a customer service perspective, we always come from a place, it just reminded me that Aiden's grandpa says, you know, he's one of those stipends for when you say, or he says thank you, or someone says thank you. You don't say, yeah, no problem, no worries, or it's your welcome, right? And then when you couple that with, I have a favorite fast food restaurant that I'm not going to mention for political reasons, and also I don't want to advertise them, and their CEOs are not a nice person, but I love their food. And they have customer service down to a pat, because they come from that place where it's, you know, when you say, oh, thank you for something, it's not just your welcome, it's their pleasure, right? It's our pleasure, that's what we're here for. And the fact that we're competing in this global marketplace for students and parents and families, and we're trying to showcase why we're the best option for them, it should be our pleasure. And so I love everything you guys presented, so great job. All right, we're ready to move on. Approval of the meeting minutes, regular, for the regular meetings, September 24, 2018.
Cancelled.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or discussion on those?
Mrs. Baylor.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation.
Mr. President, I have before me, for your consideration, 33 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval, and I also have Kathy McBay, who's going to introduce one person, who I believe is up for a change in their position, but I don't know if I'm going to do it tonight, a little difficult citizen, so.
Katie, would you please stand? I'd like to introduce to you tonight Katie Pancos. Katie is a graduate of Bruton High School, following when she obtained her bachelor's degree in accounting in 2011 with the University of Akron. Following that, she completed an internship with Leadenham Moore and was hired by them as a staff accountant. Her duties there included auditing, testing on accounting records, and preparing financial reports. She also prepared individual corporate and not-for-profit tax returns at the federal, state, and the low lows. She also has previous experience in financial and managerial accounting, billing accounts payable, and analyzing financial data. She was hired by Akron Public Schools in 2015 as an accountant, and in that role, she has performed advanced technical accounting work, maintaining accounting controls, and performing various research projects. Tonight, you're recommending a further motion to the finance controller position.
First off, I want to say thank you to the board, to the superintendent, and the treasurer. I really appreciate this opportunity. I have a long line of family members with Akron Public Schools. My mom's a teacher, and my sister's a teacher, and my uncle, as well. My dad has been in the finance industry for 30 years, so initially took his route in the finance world. And back in 2015, I was approached with this decision as the accountant, and I was really excited to bridge the gap between my family. And so now, as I'm moving into the controller position, I'm just really excited to just take on the third staff, and see what we can do. And you took then five hands along with this position. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And Reverend.
She has a good attitude.
Wonderful attitude. Do you want to introduce the young man that's with you?
Apologies, I'm nervous. This is my husband, Brad. He's in my support system, he's great, we have two kids together, and he's just been totally awesome, so.
I was just going to say, despite that you're working for this guy, I wouldn't ask for his shuttle, all of the recommendations.
Someone.
Question.
We have a motion, so any comments, questions, or discussion?
Again, we appreciate what Pancos is doing in that area. It's been a short period of time, we've had a lot of change, a lot of things that have occurred, and she has just fit in wonderfully with the existing staff, current staff. And now the move up into the comptroller's position, which looks forward to her career, her family, her outlook, and the things she wants to do to add to us being APS proud. Does that mean she stays in that office, or is she moving to another office?
No, she's going to be out front, working with the staff. We've got a really good dynamic out front.
Okay, because we want that team out front. I don't want any movement if possible, because that adds to, as you're saying, that public persona. And we depend on that front office. I think everybody, every one of us as board members depends upon that front office. When somebody's not there, not able to be there, whatever the case, we depend on the next person to step up and do whatever we need have done. So we appreciate their teamwork, the things that they do, and congratulations.
She's always stepped up, Ryan, always. I mean, Ruth was not there, stepped up, so.
She can tell you some stories about me coming in.
Please don't tell anyone. Please don't tell any of them. Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Thank you. And congratulations.
Congratulations. The next, Mr. President, I have before me, for your consideration, one motion and five resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I'm going to open up comments, questions, and discussions with number one, which is looking, I know that we're getting ready to look at auctioning a number of buildings. Can you tell us a little bit about that process? I know we've talked it in pieces and parts, but, and thank you for getting that, because it's something that the Finance Committee, I know, has been working on for a couple of years now. So just wanted to maybe talk a little bit about that, and the process timeline, and maybe even estimated return, or how that might work.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. It's found, determined that a number of the buildings that we have currently closed over the years, and have used for storage of various furniture, supplies, educational records, are no longer needed. In order to right-size the district, I was asked to research exactly how this process would work. As you are aware, there are very specific guidelines under the Ohio Revised Code 3313.411. I don't know this number forever. And one of the things that we are required to do is always look first at what charter schools would be available within our district that are eligible to be part of this process. It did take a little while to look. It actually is a listing that is found on the ODE website, and I'm happy to report that are no eligible charter schools within our district that are eligible to be part of this process. That being said, we then had to research if we have a startup charter school, a college boarding school, or a STEM school within our district that could also be eligible. Because we did not have any of those, we can now go to the next section of this particular statute, in which we can determine if they are valued more than $10,000. I am happy to report they are. So therefore, the only thing we can do under the Revised Code is to go to public auction. Now, a number of the buildings listed have been actual usable storage spaces. We have started to consolidate our storage, and make sure that these buildings are no longer actually needed by us. You have a listing of ten buildings in the list that we are recommending for your approval. If you approve this tonight, then we will start working with the superintendent and the treasurer, and the facilities director, to determine in which order we would do these. And then, we have already talked to the purchasing agent, as well as our auction house that has helped us. We've had good legal advice regarding this process as well, and we would then start doing them one by one. Because it will take us some time to do this, and I would say that it could take us up to a year to eighteen months to dispose of all ten of them. Now, we did have some questions. Mrs. Mansfield asked some questions over the weekend about a couple of them. One of them was the Bedis building. That one has not been appraised yet, but I did give to the superintendent and the treasurer the condition of the building. It currently is a building that needs a completely new HVAC system. The boilers are truly not operable. It would need an entirely new roof. It no longer has a kitchen that meets code. You are used to the CLC's having separate gyms and separate cafeterias. That is not the case. And the security entrance door for this one would need to be renovated, because it does not have the double securities, and the office would have to be relocated, because it sits in the middle of the schools. Those are just the initial ramifications of that particular building. Estimated to even start with is a upgrade of $7 million. But I do know that we do need to address the other issue of a large number of students being on North Hill, at the especially elementary level, and the superintendent, the treasurer, senior staff are looking at that particular issue now. The next question was, why isn't the odd building on the list? The odd building is a currently usable building. These buildings actually have to be determined to be non-useful, but as you foresee with Carla's and Dan's presentation, and the work of the superintendent and the treasurer, along with senior staff, some of that will be addressed as we start to relocate our odd staff to 10 North Main in the spring, followed by, believe it or not, the move of the radio station to the new outlet. So once we get through that particular issue, then we can determine the next stage for the odd building. Now, we need to talk about the archival issues. We have a lot of storage issues, and some of which, over the years, as we've done our community learning center projects, we have stored in various sites. The maintenance building has some of the paintings and the historical documents. We also have them among the other buildings that we have used for storage. I'm happy to say, we have worked with the Somme County Historical Society. We've actually started to tag some of this for them to look at, to see if they're interested in it. And we have had some contact with the University of Akron for their archives, and we've had some personal family requests. If you remember in the past, we've had some paintings. I'll remember Stuart. We donated the painting of Mr. Stuart back to the family. We've had some of those requests. As we begin to take these buildings through the auction process, we will then remove anything that is still there of archival, and start consolidating that. The superintendent, and Mr. Peddington, and myself, along with the facility director, think that some of these will be housed at Kent while we go through this process, because that will eventually go through the rest of the OFCC process in the next four years. And then, we will determine exactly what to do with each one of those. It may be possible that some of these items will go to auction themselves. So, because it is your property, you own it, we have to determine how to properly dispose of it. But this helps us right-size the district. We will then be able to turn these items over, whether they are auctioned, whether they are exchanged with another governmental agency, which you have seen in the past, or do we determine another process for a property that we currently own? The recommendation is to declare them obsolete for school purposes at this time, and that would be the recommendation I ask you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Comments, follow-up questions?
Thank you. Did I hit some of the high notes there, Doug?
You did.
One other, just cautionary note. Can we double, triple-check that we had some kind of goodbye for these buildings? Before we, I mean, I know they're mothballed, I know, but having been on the receiving end of when we, when people felt that we didn't, can we just double-check to make sure we did?
Yes. At this point, I can tell you that at this point, you have done everything. In fact, our most recent one was a community open house that we sponsored just before we turned over the Perkins property directly to the city of Akron, which did finish three weeks ago. So we will go back through those again.
There's a few I wasn't on the board when we closed, so that's...
Believe it or not, I have bricks everywhere. Somebody needs a brick. We can certainly accommodate that, but we will make sure every effort is made prior to the final auction, that anybody else... I will be honest with you, walking through some of the buildings that have been storaged, in, in storage for a long time, I would not recommend for safety purposes, that if somebody has a particular question or request, we've been able to honor it up to this point. All right? Thank you.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Here in round, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda items.
Mrs. Lasher? Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
I also give a thank you, I'm sorry, superintendent. In item six, the foundation, the LeBron James Family Foundation, has increased the total of their allocation of funds, and just don't want to let that go past without saying it out loud, to thank them.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, I have before me, for your consideration, twenty business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are improper form, and I move their approval.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations. I also am going to open up, with just a quick question, on the additional change orders at North High School. Do we know what those intend?
Yes. That was the renovation that was put into place to help renovate and get the areas ready for the college and career academies. And unfortunately, some of those change orders, when we got into the ceilings in the room 326, it had to get into much deeper concerns regarding items that were actually broken above there, and we had to make some of those changes in order to make those ceilings comparable to what we needed to put in.
Great. Thank you.
And I just want to ask, we are purchasing several transit vehicles?
Transit vans. Yes.
Right. And I've noticed, I've seen quite a few of them on the road, and is this a popular brand, or is this...
They actually meet the needs of two, there's two different types of transit vans we're buying. Some of them are for our maintenance workers, because they are taking their tools with them. The other ones that you have recently, over the past few months, are actually transportation vans, and so that we can help meet the needs of students that are homeless under the McKinney Vento Act. As of today, we are currently transporting approximately 273 students per day to meet the homeless requirements under the McKinney Vento Act, up to four different counties. Thank you.
Don't say that.
Okay.
Item number nineteen, what type of training is that for the staff?
Just a moment, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's important.
He has a big brain, like that.
I know.
That's me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item nineteen, that's training on how to create classroom environments that accommodate all the different languages, or English as a second language. So it's accommodating students who are coming without English, but then, how do you sort of bring English as more of a visual environment? So putting signs around, making your language much more explicit. So it's training for regular education teachers and English as a second language teachers.
Great. Thank you. And then, I also, item number twenty, playing local schools.
That's me, also.
Oh.
Playing local schools, they don't have the Title I staff like we do, to be able to accommodate students that are at Mayfair Christian School. We're already there, because we have some Akron resident students going there, so we already have tutors there, playing local, worked with Kenyon Harrington, to see if they could contract with us, basically, since we're already there to provide the service. And I thought it was, I actually brought it up at instructional policy, because I thought it was a great example of us collaborating and providing support to another district.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerning this? Here in round, hold call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Superintendent's Report?
A couple of things. Here are last two guys, and I need one more of those. Wisconsin, with Ohio Department of Education Strategic Plan Team, going through this eighteen month program, which we're about halfway through, with the coherence fellowship. Basically, the State Department of Education has a strategic plan, which I'm passing out, and you'll see references to equity in educating the whole child. So I'll get more copies of this, and hopefully, an electronic copy soon, as they roll that out. But part of this program with the coherence fellowship is to help the department work through a problem of practice. As they roll out this strategic plan, they have to improve their services and communications to districts who are going to have issues and questions about the plan. How do they improve their services, particularly with, you know, the tier of targeted districts in the state that are targeted for improvement? And so, there's a group of ODE personnel, including the state superintendent, and then there's a group of folks who are outside of ODE, such as superintendents like myself, Eric Gordon from Cleveland, and we have some teacher representatives on that committee as well. So, when you look at our strategies, they tie in really well with what the state is doing. I told Paulo that he copied our plan, which then Eric Gordon said, they copied their plan as well. But it's all about how do we take, you know, the work, and if you remember, we went through the Excel program at Harvard, and that's where we came up, you know, with that coherence framework. In this iteration of it, they've expanded it to include some other things like equity, you know, in the design. And so, we're taking a lot of the things that you all have heard, and they're putting it into this strategic plan. And so, that work is being rolled out as we speak, and it's really going to inform, I think, a lot of what school districts do across the state.
Which one?
Oh, the other, yes. Well, you know, speaking of equity, and bias, I wasn't at the last board meeting, because I was in Washington with Judge Ciadocio and Mr. Rambler, Sergeant Sandor from Akron Police Department. And we really got, you know, it's all about Georgetown University with this mental health and juvenile justice work, and it's really about diverting students from the juvenile justice system. And how can we implement practices, policies, and procedures that, you know, as one of you said this evening, I think it was you, Mr. Miller, about, you know, kids act up, and, you know, instead of helping them change, we want to just punish them. And, look, we've done that for years, and it hasn't worked. And suspension and expulsion rates are still very high. You know, House Bill or Central Board Ten came out, you know, banning suspensions and expulsions for certain things for kids, kindergarten to third grade, that we have to implement. So policies are going to have to change. But, you know, those punitive things don't work. There's time for punitive measures, but there's also times for restorative practices, where we try to work with, you know, students, so they don't go down that pathway, you know, which we refer to the school-to-prison pipeline. And, you know, in order for our students to be successful, we have to look at things a little bit differently. And so, it's not about giving kids a brief pass, but it's really about getting to the heart of the problem. And a lot of that, you know, there is a lot of implicit bias in how people look at kids, and how kids are approached. And I, you know, I always say, you know, a lot of our employees will talk about their due process rights, so kids have the same rights as well, when it comes to discipline. And so, we spent a week, you know, with other states, including New York, Washington State, and several others, and looking at how we can use some diversion practices. And I can't, you know, there were some interesting things, such as the TAMI, having our resource officers part of the IP team, because, and I actually agree with it, when it comes to kids with special needs, having some discipline issues, you know, then Officer Sandor was the one who said it. Was that behavior a manifestation of that kid's disability? I almost fell out of my chair, because we typically don't hear that, you know, from the police. They look at it a little differently. But I think that's the realization, and what we're dealing with, some of our special needs kids, which, who can get into issues with discipline, you know, you'll have maybe sometimes, you know, people who don't understand that, and they have to be looked at a little bit differently according to law. And so, it's, there are some other issues we have to deal with, like, do a capstone project, which we're looking at, how to, you know, lower some of the rates of discipline, and put kids on a better path. So we're, as a group, will continue to work through that. You know, with the judge and Mr. Rambler's, right, the family resource center at the court is a, they have some great resources for families, and, I mean, long-term, it would, it would serve us really well to have those services right at our engagement center. So that's something I believe the judge is in favor of. We just have to work out the details and figure out the space, but I think there'll be some good work coming out of this.
I think it's key, what you just said, it's resources for the family.
Yes. Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you for the update. I appreciate it. I'm going to forward my reports, my treasurer's report.
A few items to review. Item six on business affairs, is the approval of ClearGov.com. It's that transparency tool.
It's that transparency tool, something that I know Finance Committee has been looking at and reviewing with me and being patient with me on a fiscal-type dashboard for a number of years. ClearGov is the first platform that I've seen that incorporates both financial and academic data. And they're heavy in use in Wisconsin and Massachusetts. And we will be one of the first districts in Ohio to adopt it. And of course, that comes with some risks, but it also comes with a lot of opportunity for us to be able to steer the conversation about the comparison tool, about what we display. They're really making an upfront investment in Ohio through us. We received a 40% discount off of their total price to do that work. So we're really excited to bring back a future demo for you. And I know Mr. Bravo has been really looking forward to a dashboard. But out of the Finance Committee and through our office, we have been looking at how do we partner and address all the items that you have been talking about. I think it's really fitting that Ruth, in her translation, which she's helping me put my thoughts into words, she said it would be great if we called this the Equity and Transparency Center. Because when you're talking about the academic and our investment in certain academic programs, and your questions to the Finance Team about, show us that academic return on investment, it resonated. So I thought it was really timing with everything that you brought back to you. Comes to Ruth, too. Tomorrow night's Palladina Open House, I think everybody's been invited, but if not, it's 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at 400 West Market. We have the CEO from Palladina, from Denver, who's flying in for that, and I'm sure wants to shake their hands. And we have dignitaries, but we also have, we'll call them dignitaries in this capacity too, and all of them, have our union leadership who will be on hand, who really led this process also through our healthcare benefits advisory committee. It's not quite just a timber lake, but it'll still. More warning, five-year forecast presentation is next board meeting.
Okay.
The last piece of news is, hopefully you've been invited to one of the five regional presentations hosted by Representatives Cup and Patterson. Summit County Educational Service Center is hosting the meeting, as you know from our previous discussions. That's a new school funding formula model. We're really proud of the work that those two have led in a bipartisan effort, and that's going to be the first public discussion about that. So we're really excited. So October 23rd at the Summit County Educational Service Center, if you can attend, it'll be from 10 to noon. I know that it's almost full. That concludes my report. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And any reports, legal contracts and board policy?
No report. We meet on Thursday.
Finance and capital management?
Yeah, we have a report. We met on October 2nd and discussed, and a lot of what is on my report, we've already talked about here, but we discussed the sale of property. We had Deborah there discussing with us in depth and went through the questions that myself and Reverend Walker had at the time. So, and we are ready, willing, and able to let that go forward. I guess I'm not going to speak for you, but I am anyways. We continued our discussion on the credit card policy. The state recently updated the use of the credit cards by school districts. Finance Committee reviewed and updated draft copy of the policy and guidelines 6423 concerning credit cards. The draft version will be shared with the Policy Committee to review. So we're handing that along. We talked about the dashboard, and I promised Brian, this is the last time I'll call it the dashboard, we're going to call it the equity and transparency piece for our website. And from an equity standpoint, and I know this is something we talked about when we first got on the Finance Committee, but we, hopefully we'll have an ability to actually look at spending on a school-by-school basis. And that goes towards equity right there. So we're excited about that. We looked at a couple of different, we actually looked at a couple of different school districts, what they were doing, and compared to what Brian presented, and we okayed this evening. And I know there's some work done leading up to that and looking at that. I discussed that with Brian as well. And I liked what I saw, and I'm excited for it to get off and running because we'll be a lot, able to do a lot more, input a lot more data there than some of the systems that use only immunist data. So there's going to be a little bit upfront spend of time out of the CFO's office, but I think in the long run, it's going to be wonderful for the district. So, let's see. And let's see, in order to stay on the edge of technology, Finance Department's currently working on techno, working with the Technology Department to test the version of accounting software, the UNI software, and they're eager to roll that new version out this year. I can't talk. And that's, and Reverend Walker will take care of the rest of the Finance Committee report.
This is our September 2018 investment review of the Akron School District's general fund. The investments, our net income was $196,591 throughout the quarter. And then projected gross income through the next 12 months is $553,409. And then our construction funds, our investment results, our portfolio has realized net investment income of $1,817,308 since inception in February 2015. Projected gross income through the next 12 months is $385,364. And then our permanent improvement investment results, the portfolio has realized a net investment income of $502,829 since its inception in February 2015. And then our projected gross income through the next 12 months is $203,642. That is our report.
If I could say one thing. I want to thank Deborah for the time she put in researching the sale of property, and thank you in advance for the additional time you're going to be putting in on that. It's appreciated.
Instructional policy and student achievement?
Do you have the sheet? Do you want to take the first half and the second? Just go till you want to stop.
The eighth grade?
Eighth grade showcase. So the eighth grade, I'll just start showing this while.
Okay, go ahead, Ben.
Oh, the eighth grade showcase. In case you didn't get to go last year, this is, this is our second annual eighth grade showcase. But this one's really important because this is going to be the best way for our students and families to start to know even more about what pathway they're going to take.
Okay, as we transform our high schools to the college and career academies, it's important for our students to learn about the pathways available at APS high schools, potential career paths, and the transferable skills they will learn so that they can make an informed choice for their high school career. One way we're educating our students about this important information is through the eighth grade showcase. The showcase will be held on Wednesday, October 24th. All eighth grade students from across the district will visit Quaker Station between 8:30 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. First, students will hear a presentation about high school readiness. They will then visit four booths of their choosing to learn about the available pathways, meet teachers and students in the pathway, and discover potential careers for their future. Counselors and teachers at the middle schools are working hard to prepare students for this visit, doing presentations about the academy model and using the Career Cruising Platform to help students home and on the pathway booths to visit.
So eighth grade is that critical year for students and their families to determine which high school the students will attend. That's not changed. That's something that's always been true. Eighth grade students are not selecting their college and career pathways yet, but we want to make sure they know that all these pathways exist at the high schools and make decision about which high school they might want to attend. While the majority of students attend their neighborhood high school, if you remember when we talked about Nashville, I believe that it was 90%?
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent of the students stayed put in their neighborhood and went to their neighborhood high school. And remember, our students will always automatically have a spot reserved at their high school in their neighborhood if they, should they choose to stay there. Or they can open a roll to another school that aligns with their interests. In the winter of their ninth grade years, when they actually select their top three choices for pathways and find out which they get into. So this is on October 24th. We want to encourage parents to come out that evening from 4:00 to 6:00. And board members, if you didn't get a chance to go last year, each of the pathways had booths, and there, several of them had students that were able to engage and, with other students, and they did an excellent job. So I would encourage parents to go out that evening between 4:00 and 6:00. For families who need transportation, and this is fantastic, this makes me so happy, Akron Public Schools is providing free shuttle service between Quaker Station and the following middle schools, Boctle East, Higher, Innis, Jennings, Litchfield, and Miller South. The shuttles will run every 30 minutes, and the first shuttle leaves the middle school at 4:00, and the last shuttle leaves Quaker Station at 6:00. If anyone has further questions, they should contact Beth Winters and/or Dr. McWilliams-Woods. So they can get there, and the students will be there during the day, and the parents can be there in the evening with their students.
You know, we just got an updated list of the businesses that are, you know, part of each one of the pathways. And do they have a piece in this? I mean, just out of curiosity.
Good evening.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Really, the showcase is really not specific to our business partners. We really wanted to have our pathway teachers and our pathway students share their experiences and the great things happening in their pathway with our students. So not a big venue for business partners to get involved in.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Is that going to mean you're going to come or not? That's just part of the question.
I didn't answer your question.
Is this open to community members who maybe have a kid at charter school or prep school?
Absolutely.
Did you want to give an update on?
No, I didn't have anything written down. The last one we had, very good, moving forward again. I was not able to attend the last planning meeting, so I can't really speak of that. But it is moving forward in a very positive manner. And we're getting down to where I think the community has an idea of what they want to do short-term on both internally and externally. And then we'll move from there, see, you know, with our, you know, the help of our leadership in front of us on whether it's doable and which direction we can go.
So we have lots to tell you. Lots of big doings are happening with student engagement. So, did you have those copies on? Did you bring those with you? They're already. Oh, are they at your spot? Okay. So At Your Spot is a copy. So in case you haven't gone to look at the shared document, this is the latest version. In case you happen to have time, you're traveling, all those things, you can take a look at it here. I would encourage you to still go in, there's still an opportunity for you to go in, add questions, add comments, add things you'd like to see happen in that shared document that we have on Google Drive. We will be having a presentation done by students that will be done to the principals this Wednesday, to all of our senior high school principals. And that will be done by our students from the Student Engagement Committee. If you would like to come watch that, we can get you the information on that. Unless there are any objections, and there are still three chances to review what's going forward, you can come to the Policy Committee meeting this Thursday, you can come to the Student Engagement meeting next Monday, or you can go to the Instructional Policy meeting next Tuesday. If you have any questions about any of these things, or if you just want to meet the students ahead of time, or any of those things, they will be here Monday afternoon at 4:15, I think it is. So please engage if you would like. If everything's a green light, we'll just keep moving forward. We're really excited about where we are.
They'll also be, they will read this as a policy at each of those three meetings since they are all publicly noticed meetings. So it'll actually, this policy will actually get about four readings because we'll bring it to the board and ask for approval. But, I mean, now there is a board engagement piece on this as well. It's not just a student engagement piece, it's a board engagement piece. I hope I'm not stealing it under.
No, that's fine.
Just the importance of, you know, taking a look at maybe what's on that sheet, which has also been shared with you in Google Drive. And as Lisa said, really encouraging you to go out and read Google Drive because there is sort of that mentorship, board engagement, cross-student engagement piece that's a part of this, that's kind of, you know, adding to our, lessening our free time. But it's just important that you, and then the three opportunities, the three meetings that you have to go and ask questions, voice concerns, engage, you know, interact with everyone that's kind of been a part of this, including the students on Monday, and hearing it from them as well. So, sorry.
That's fine. And they, they will be giving the presentation along with us on October 22nd, so the next board meeting, and I'll get to the five-year forecast. So, Friday? So, you know, if they've decided they want to be student board members, we'll see what happens after that meeting. Yeah. So that is all I have to share about that. I think, one other thing, fellow board members and anyone in APS who would like to, Mr. Bravo is being interviewed at Leadership on Main by moi on Wednesday. So if you want to come see, we both may end up crying, who knows? Because you know, the two of us. So that could happen. But I would encourage you, if you'd like to come to breakfast, to reach out there. I'm sure there are still some tickets available. Yay. Oh, no. Between you and Ryan, we're in trouble.
What time was the students' meeting on that Monday?
4:15.
What date is that?
Monday the 15th.
Thank you for that. And I, you know, I skipped my report because we had a lot of good things to report out on, and spoiler alert, we have no reason for executive session tonight, so. But I do, before we go, you know, I just, again, around the room, around the table, and what the superintendent's doing with the recent trip with Judge Ciadocio, and the work that Ryan's done on, you know, at the state level with the refunding formula, and, you know, all of the work that people around this room are doing, and even our board members especially, too, just inspired and impressed with the work that this board is doing, grateful for the support that we get from the staff around the room. I know we ask a lot of questions, and sometimes we put you on the spot. Apologize for that. But just really impressed, there's so much engagement going on with our board members, and there's so much discussion and good work going on at our committee meetings. So if you get a chance to even cross and visit each other's, and I know sometimes we do, just want to encourage that, or if you're staff and you want to come, you know, encourage that. There's just so much going on. So at the committee level especially, and the discussion that's taking place has just been impressive to me, so. And for those of you that are leading extra assignments and taking on extra tasks, thank you. With that, any unfinished business? Any new business? We have no reason to recess into executive session, therefore we need not reconvene. I'm going to ask for a motion. You're adjourned. Did you have something? Only if you would give me the honor of, yes, ma'am, of lovingly, give me the honor, I just want to take a picture of all the board members with the plaque I received. Is that all right?
That's okay.
We will convene after this for a photo. Do we have a motion in a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? All right. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
This is Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Is this amazing?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.